He's not crazy about shoveling snow in Illinois one time, but.
Yeah. It was the name of their chief.
Not be able to zoom in, but I think you have to feel more so. Isn't it gonna be?
Evening. There's a nice parade on streets at funeral Saturday. Thank you.
And let's get a little bit of a shot.
Yes.
All my guys are passing away. Well, that's a chance I saw an email once, I gotta go after them.
That's what Bill is trying to do too, having like yesterday Thanksgiving, but they didn't find me for Friday. Friday morning on the main street. In May week. Are we ready? Close thing up there.
Yep.
Good.
Aren't we new to the village?
For council?
Uh huh. Is that like council meeting items?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what this is.
Yeah, that's kind of, so the agenda is the front page on that. The next page is just kind of a little preview what we'll discuss and. I've got a couple of things that I've got able to, was able to put together tonight or I'm gonna discuss on top of what was already in that, so.
Okay.
But council meeting preview, uh, basically have kind of the general matter of the. Consider the election results, we transitioned the governing bodies, where in the seat numbers. That'll be kind of one of the first things in the meeting. Then we have the kind of action items, we'll have the corporate boundary resolution, which is a kind of angle thing that basically just. Is what we passed and we give that to the county and that sets up so they know where our tax and district is. Uh, the next thing is the public defender pay, um, that was something we talked about at budget time. Our pay rate is I think fifty dollars an hour at this time, and it was gonna take it to seventy dollars an hour and we kind of got that in the budget. It's just setting up passing amendments for that, so.
How many did we have public defenders?
I don't know. I, I think I've seen two or three different names.
Maybe not much more.
Yeah.
I, I thought maybe three.
I know I've seen, I know I've seen at least two names that maybe in their.
But they have to pay that, don't they? I mean whoever uses a public defender, don't they have to pay that and their fine? Is that part of our institution?
I don't think so.
It's not?
Cause that went through the list or the while, because I think people were trying to recoup those costs. And the idea is if you have to have a public defender, but if you end up having to pay for it, it's not free. I, I don't think, I don't think they, that comes back to us. It seems like we had, did we talk about that during, during the budget when we were talking about that and I don't.
I don't remember, I, I, I remember having a conversation about raising our public defender. I knew that we were a little behind some other communities.
I know, like you, like you have to have a public defender assigned to you. Okay, and then they have to pay a fine, like, you know, whatever it is. Those fees are not included in the court cost, are they?
I don't believe so.
So the city just has to suck it up and pay them.
That, that's my understanding, I don't think, we don't get, that doesn't get reimbursed to us. We can, I can see if I can find that again, I think we had that conversation, we were talking about this at budget time, I can't remember exactly.
Can you see the same names over time after time after time?
Yeah.
Sometimes I have to make a little bit of a, a little reciprocity here.
Well, yeah, it's, I think it's gonna be, who they don't have the evidence and sometimes it's just a lot.
I know, but you know, maybe these things.
Any, any other questions on that? I'll try, oh, I'm pretty sure somewhere in the correspondence when we were talking about that budget. We looked at that question, so I can verify that for us.
Well, I, I definitely think they do, I just, I make sure I didn't do that.
Uh, then construction engineering services with that piece of drive extension project, uh, we opened those proposals today. We had Ford and Kirk and I are in the process of reviewing those and have a recommendation in the council. It looks like, um, I think one choice was higher than what the estimate was, but the other, the other three were below. So we will be within our estimated expense on that part of that project.
Hey, we're down there doing something today.
We're gonna move, that, that might have been us moving, we're gonna move the water line.
It wasn't us.
Wasn't us. They may just be surveying, getting ready for the project. But that won't be, that won't start until next year. We haven't had that, that detailed conversation on that, but it, the plan is that'll start next spring. We've got the contract documents finalized this week, so.
Where's the water line coming?
It's, it is on the south side and with the road construction and all the storm sewer and everything there, it's a little bit older up. Kirk wants to move it, so it's more out of the way and we can't really move it on the south, so we'll move it to the north. And we'll actually have an easement at some point in the next, I don't know, we won't have it this next year, but probably in January. We'd have to, we'd probably be that helpful for the easement? We don't have to, okay. Anyway, we'll, we have to get just a little bit of a utility easement, uh, and one piece of stuff, we, we had it for probably ninety-five percent of that stretch, but we just had a little bit for.
It would be nice to have that straightened out.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be a good project and get that going. Now, just while we're kind of talking about road projects, I'll just take it on the side and talk about the right turn lane project. Remember the, the bids for that came, that was, uh, KDOT did the bid letting on that. Those bids came back kind of higher than, um, what was initially estimated. It gone back and looked at kind of what the scope was and realized that what, uh, was outlining the scope. That scope probably should have been a little bit broader to cut this work that needed to be done. So they expanded the funding for that and we don't have all that finalized, but, um, I've sent a letter to them saying I think we're good with the, the additional funding. To get, are we having a little bit of an additional cost because of our match is a little bit higher now, but it's a lot better than what it was gonna be if we can do that.
Is it like two hundred thousand dollars higher, wasn't it?
We were, if we, if the funding stayed the way it was, our responsibility for the construction, construction community was over two hundred thousand dollars. Now I think we're at fifty-seven thousand dollars, so. Yeah. Makes it look manageable, so, um, that, and we, then we, that's tied into Mark's transportation improvement program. And so we've got to have that project amended through Mark and then once Mark ends it and KDOT, all those puzzle pieces get, try to shift it around, so. But it's still slated for the spring. Even if we get all this, I asked the representative from KDOT, you know, is that gonna slow us up? And they said, no, we should, they can, Mark, they talk about it in December and then they would approve it in early January, that amendment. And then we can go with KDOT and get all that, and be ready to go in spring as well. So that project, that project is kind of progressing and just not quite, not quite there yet. We also have the sanitation agreement addendum and that's basically our agreement with waste management. It's an addendum to that, solid waste disposal contract, so that it incorporates that increase with the recycling. And also the two percent adder for the twenty twenty-one year. And we've already, we've got our base set up for that at last minute, it's just the point of that, so we kind of have to appeal. And then finally, on, what we got on that list is the animal code. I sent that out and provided that, did that language look like it kind of hit what we were trying to, trying to do, so it made it a little bit. If you basically got your animal picked up and it wasn't registered, your registration fees were higher and then also kind of putting in their language. Without telling the judge at what level to charge that, those that weren't registered should be considered a little bit more punitive than others.
Did you see where Spring Hill is going to not charge anything for their animal registration?
I saw that. Yeah, I.
I found that interesting. I thought, here we are doing, what, what is that doing, yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
Did you want to catch and release that, like, was there, there's a cost to catching string?
Yeah.
But the mayor was, didn't know, he just didn't want to charge for registering.
Drive down here.
I, was there a fee if they got picked up and were not registered?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
What I read, but I did see that they were kind of going away from that. I think the thought was is the, or one of the things that was the, the, the cost registration was a burden to. They'd rather have them registered and not make them, get more registered without, have less money than having three registered and give, give the fees for the fee. That's a different.
I saw a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just found that kind of interesting, I thought. Did you, this is one that Don Ford was wanting to get some leave company to do.
Yeah, we, so, we, um, after the last work study, we met with Randy and Stephanie and I and Don and Adra Harper, who works in the court. We all met, talked about it and that's how we kind of came up with the language of trying not to be over complicated with the language, but have it, have it do what council wanted it to do, so. And then it's also been reviewed by the ten whalers, so, yeah.
I think that was a big thing, was Don said that they got in a tough time enforcing it in the way it was written. We almost had to pay for, pay to get pets on the food, but it wasn't official, we had to.
Be interesting.
Yeah.
I know.
Make it a little simpler.
Did you guys talk about this in the, I thought we started you? I guess, that was missed out, maybe it's our answer, cause the time before we talked about it, more penalties for dangers? Like making more fees out of that, which I shouldn't.
So that.
Make a bigger one.
But make more of a deterrent or something, cause I read through it and it's all we find sometimes for unregistered, but I know we talked about.
Cause what I think.
More strict on the dangers.
Yeah, we talked about possibly doubling or tripling the fines and I like the way it's worded because we, I, I understand what you were saying about, you don't wanna say it has to be this and give the judge some leasings, but still make it, you know, make it work. Like, and find more.
That some codes have in there, like, if your, if your dog is, um, picked up and deemed a, a dangerous animal. Then here's what, um, you've gotta do. There, there's a little bit of that language in that kind of section on the dangerous animal, but it's not as spelled out as some other codes. I guess that was one thing, is trying to just kind of keep it somewhat sane and un, because I think if we get into that, cause that, that can get into saying you've gotta have certain type of insurance and all that. And maybe we wanna do that, but that kind of changes it, it's a bigger rewrite, I don't know, but I guess was my thought. But, but if we wanna do that.
I, I was just thought, I know we talked about it with the committee before about that being a concern, I didn't know if we changed anything or.
We, we didn't change anything on that end, it was more of just trying to make the fines, if you were unregistered.
Trying to get people registered.
Yeah.
So everything would be a little different kind of if they were registered, that was an issue.
You know, if we do this, I know they, not here, but I know his feelings on this and I know he's really not very supportive, so. Could they, the officers, could they make a report to us just to write a report every month? And let's see if the numbers go up and see how to receive it all.
Numbers.
See if we're having an impact in regard to, they say they can't enforce anything, you know, because they don't know what it is. Check, is there a way we can monitor to see if this is having an impact on people registering their pets or not? Or if they're issuing more citations since they do not have to determine how free they're on years? I don't know how many of those they issue now, I'm sure.
Well. So I think some of that is, is, I don't know, that we have good data for to be able to compare to. The other thing is, I think, I know that, I know that Don is the part of that conversation, if I get that wrong, let me know. Like before, they kind of left it at officer discretion and, you know, whether or not to write, but he, he's now made it that if they are not registered, they're getting any citation. So that, so then there, we've already kind of changed our philosophy, we might be seeing the numbers already on that end of things. But I think we could, I mean, if we wanna report back on how many dog, animal, animal control lanes that we have, I think we can do that.
Cats are everywhere.
And honestly, if we were gonna do a bigger rewrite, I would just say we could have, if we have a cat business, don't worry about cats at large, because.
They're everywhere.
Nobody, no, typically, my, most shelters are so full of cats, they don't want cats. And so even if we go catch a cat at large.
No, they're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, they.
And I say that too, cause I think one time we had a work comp, like, involved a cat. All, all the more reason.
We have a one?
There, I think it, there is, I've heard a story of a work comp like tied to a cat incident, so.
Oh, why?
We just.
I've heard from four dogs.
Dogs are easier to, cats are just.
Cause when I heard that, I was like, why didn't they just do the catalog?
But anyway, I just wondered, I'd, I'd like to determine if we're having an impact by changing this. If people are registering them or if they're writing more tickets to enforce it or.
Well, I think we can, as we get into next year, we can try to promote that, hey, you know, if your dog, you get to pick that up, you're gonna have to differ fines on this, come get your animal registered for. So that we could see if we get a, a bigger increase.
Yeah, compared to registrations for the.
What are we, we're at two hundred right now.
Five hundred years.
And then cats, does that come in the angle?
Yeah. Most of them are minded.
Well, I've seen sheep walk down these streets, so.
She's coming.
On a leash.
Well, somebody had a chicken.
Somebody did buy rooster.
Stuck around the.
They've got a storm there, they're like, creepy.
I still have people asking about.
They had it on Facebook page at one point in time.
Yeah, I know.
Well, then we know it wasn't her.
Yeah. People love rooster, I had a blind dove in the park, I'm like, filming video of rooster. It was a great, it's a thing, people bring their kids by like, and they bring out rooster food. They still talk in the laundry that someone will get together and tell them the rooster story. One guy picked it up and carried it around like it was a little dog and headed.
And that's how work comp claims happen.
That's how that.
I tell you, that was a famous rooster.
Any other comments on that, if you wanna go deeper on the.
I'm okay, I just wanted to, you guys kept talking about it, I don't know, and I missed anything, did you? No, you didn't miss anything.
No, I think, I, I looked through, I think it's good, I think it's, I think it's funny that we got this fell out, all the different animals that are on the house.
Oh, yeah.
No, he's like twenty pounds.
Where did this come from?
I know.
Something had happened.
That's ended the dangerous. And a, a gorilla's muppets over certain, you know, yeah, twenty pounds. But no, I, 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 I'm okay with it, cause like I said, I think the, I think the initial concern, one of the initial concerns they had was he was ready to increase the number of dead balls dramatically. And I'm not, you know, it may, I, I don't know, but my biggest concern was having a long, long books that the ostrich can't enforce or they have.
That's what.
That, that was the big thing, cause even Don said that, you know, we're trying to be a little lean and somebody's due to town, you know, and we're, we're not gonna give them a citation and then it's like, can't do that, we're just gonna, you know. It's less than sixty days, if you're not getting a citation over the past sixty days and you're gonna get one, I think this just fills it up a little bit cleaner, makes it a little bit cleaner and easier for them to enforce, so.
It'll be easier to enforce.
Yeah.
Well, and the people issue, I know, just, there's probably gonna be some more, just because I know that most people don't like those kind of dogs. And there's, um, a lot of them in shelters that people can't adopt because they're banned. But I think that the ones that are gonna be going out linked to adopt them are probably the responsible.
Yeah, I, I think that, if those people who, um, shy away from having one are likely to be a good owner, that it's gonna take care of them.
Right.
And if we have a big push to, to make sure people know the lines are gonna be stickered there, if they're not registered, to make sure we have a push to get them registered, then maybe one, two hundred.
Yeah.
It's always.
We only put the cities at two and the state.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's not too many that have re-specifically.
Well, that's why I was asking before, I haven't heard, I mean, this is our always on the news of their problem. And I haven't heard a lot of chatter about it, so. I haven't either.
I think the big, one of the big things for me is if we're gonna change the ordinance, then so it's easier to be enforced, then we should enforce.
That we should enforce it, that's why I wanted to make sure that it was going to be enforced, that we weren't just doing it to.
It's really, a law isn't any good, that we need to.
If you're not gonna enforce it or it's difficult to enforce or it's difficult to say.
Yeah, it's like telling your kids to be going ten, but they never make them.
Eleven.
Right. Then they'll just be on the lawn, you know.
Well, then probably what we'll do, I think, we'll have a, we'll have a ordinance, we'll just repeal the existing code and.
It'll be what we have, the company rule we have.
Yeah. Well, probably what I will do is I probably will put it in the packet as a, a red line dollars.
Nothing, right? We spoke.
Yeah.
I love the one about the trespassing of a cat upon the private ground.
Something else that may bring to council, if we get, get that freed out in time, our GIS project, when we, we did that, um. And it was a bid to us that they did it on, based on the information that we gave them. On our sanitary sewer, they have, they estimated about five hundred manholes. They already shot seven hundred and I think there's probably another hundred and forty out there that we, that they can see kind of in the system or, you know, that we're gonna have to do, define to kind of clean up the rest of the data. Um, and there's a little bit of, on the water side, and so they basically same as upside down on the, on the contract and they'd like to recoup some of that. Their, their estimation is that it's about twenty-one thousand dollar difference between what it should have been and what it is. Um, they're, they've kind of priced some of that down and we find that it is, that we'd like to have a thirteen thousand dollar, um, additional to, to finalize all this. If we don't do that, then it's, um, we'll probably end up having a segment of the sewer system that doesn't get finalized and some of the water that doesn't get finalized, which is the whole point, and kind of do all this. I, I've talked to them, I, I, it kind of frustrates me, but I also understand that information that we had, cause we, we didn't have, um, we just didn't have good maps, we didn't probably have. I don't, I only did that stuff in Wilson, I don't believe, I know it's been a long time ago. And so just what we gave them and they kind of went on that, we're a lot different than that, so we're probably making something, because that kind of gets above the dollar amounts of an adjustment to the contract, so, um.
Do we have the money?
Yeah, I, we've got money, um, I think the, like I said, the water is, I think what the difference is about two thousand dollars is what they're estimating. The sewer size is a little bit more, because there's literally about, um, two thirds more manholes than, than was originally estimated.
That's a lot.
So that will, that is closer to ten thousand and we've got money in the, in the waste water lot. We have more cushion, more wastewater budget we can do in the water, and so, but with between them, I think we can provide.
And how easy will it be in the future if we add manholes or add existing lines to add to this?
It, it'll be.
Much easier than what we have now?
Yeah, yeah, and what we, I mean, ideally, what we'll probably do is look at getting our own handheld unit. But then as we add things, we can go out and shoot those, so if we, or say we move the water line, we can go out and shoot that water line ourselves.
And modify.
And modify the, the files and, and do that.
I stand there, but we're going to the intersection and move it across.
Yeah, 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 we could, we could go into there and say, okay, now this is over here, this is, we, and that may be something that we just, because we may not have that equipped yet, we may just have them. If we get it done in time and we're still out there, just say, okay, go shoot those marks and we'll change that line. But in the future, yeah, any work we would do, we could go out there and, and quite that data and upgrade it, so. If, if, once we have this, it'll be a lot easier to keep updated and make sure. And that's part of that, is just when some of that happens then, that was early on, I mean, I think, I would imagine GIS was around when that initial map was made, but. That, that technology has changed so much in, in the last five years, in the longboard. You know, a lot more than kind of rather to this, a previous location, it was us being able to do it and making, it was easy enough for people to figure out and, and kind of do without being specifically trained in part of GIS. It's not, but now I can, I can modify them by doing that attribute, so. Any other questions on that?
What do they think they're, that we can handle that?
Well, I think, except we can get that to them and, um, tell them, go ahead, yes, we'll get finalized that. I think maybe by June of the year, we should have, have something, which we should also have, um, something soon on our code. We would maybe we're gonna put that onto like a web based. They are, we sent them charter ordinance and so that'll be included on that. We should have that, I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll have access to go in and review what it, what they put it together. So we should have that. I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll have access to go in and review what it, what they put it together. Maybe by, I'm thinking potentially by January's meeting, we would have the, kind of the adoption of the complication of the code update. So I don't, I don't wanna say code update because it's not really updating the code, it's a recomplication of the code bank.
And yeah, well, that, that'll be something that we can update once that's done or we want to send it to them.
So what we will send, like when we pass a new ordinance, we'll send them a copy of it and they'll make the change to the electronic version immediately. And probably like, probably within a week. Then at the end of the year, because part of this, we get ten paper copies and we actually have, have some paper copies in an office. So at the end of the year, then they'll give us, and that's similar to what we do now, is we get like updates. We'll go have to go update those with the electronic version. The version that will be on the website will be mostly up to date and fairly immediate.
And then when it's on there, is it, where are you able to go on and search?
Yeah.
Keywords or?
So we, the code itself will be out, the format of it will change a little bit because we could have left the same, they utilize a sixteen chapter setup and so we run with that. There's several communities that do that and kind of keep you in line with, I think it's a little bit similar. So a period book or something, you know, it's a year chapter five and they use city code, it's probably gonna be a year chapter five. But yeah, you'll be able to search that. You can print that. A lot of times I will go there, look at the hyperlink and we can put a link to a document and send somebody that's fully electronic, please submit it to like to.
Some people ask questions like, have a book in the right? So.
And it's so easy to find stuff.
Once we have that, that's where, I mean, my thought is it's part of, because we get people to call and say, hey, here's, here's what it is. But next time, you can go to this link and this type and find it that way. Hopefully they, they.
I mean, like they're looking for a manhole?
No, for like code, like if they wanted to look up the dog code.
Oh, I see.
The GIS stuff, the GIS stuff will be. Yeah, the GIS stuff, we would wanna keep, well, the water system and the wastewater system, we'll wanna keep ourselves. Something that we may do with that is put on our, our zoning so that somebody can look up, you know, either in this half, oh, it's our, I use the old terms today, it's main residential or R two, R one, it's commercial. They're up there. And I'm trying to think some other things, you know, we could put on there or have a, have one that kind of shows where our parks are or our city facilities. So people can kind of see.
The work out in there.
What?
Work out your family.
Yeah, yeah. That would be, that would be.
I know.
But all that will end up, that would all tie back to, you know, like Paul Kelly's information will next, so.
There's a word manager, manager of all, there's something. And then they go, what's that? Hang on, there is like this bull game, okay?
This what?
Bull game.
Oh.
This is my word. Pretty bad.
And if there's.
It feels like it should be.
There's other things like that. Think about, we could, that may be something. Cause we have those in a CAD file, something. CAD file. We can make it up a little bit easily. Anything else on any of that? Wanted to, so our code enforcement officer is going to retire again. And thinking about. That was kind of done as a part-time position and really between what time he was working and he was kind of split between some other duties. You know, I, we just did have a lot of code enforcement. And what I'm looking at is trying to do a full-time code enforcement person.
I'm all for that.
Yeah.
I'm running out of words.
I don't like driving around.
But, but, so that's kind of, I think we're gonna move that direction. In, in community development so that at some point we can maybe get some redundancy between building inspection and, and code. And also there's, sometimes there's items that lies a little bit between both worlds and that way they're closely in a, in a topic and figure out what, what steps need to be taken rather than sometimes it, there were kind of differences. It was like, whoa, I think this is yours and I think now it's just.
Now, I, I thought at one time, and maybe I've got this incorrect, but I thought at one time that it would be under the police department to work and write citations. Is that not the case?
We can look at that. I don't, I don't think, I don't know that that, it could be that the way our code is written. Maybe yes, but I, I can verify that with three, I don't.
You're right, though, that is a reason.
Right, I thought that's what we talked about and it was, it was, it wasn't great because he was only working ten or fifteen hours a week and then it was split between code enforcement and court.
Correct, right.
Right. So that might be something that, something to think about.
We may have to adjust. I, I guess my thought would be, I'd recommend that we adjust our codes. We don't have to do that.
Right.
Because I know that there's communities, I mean, like Iowa, that our code enforcement, he wasn't under a PD and they wrote, I don't know, it may not have been, citation may not have been the term that he wrote. We can figure out something that might get it to the municipal.
Yeah, whatever that takes. Cause if it's easier to have him in, in, oh, in our community development, whatever.
Oh, we've got nothing to do. Cause Jessica's gone, so there's nothing.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that would be good to have somebody full-time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that will, like I said, that's a little bit.
Well, then still through the animal stuff or go back to PD?
I think that's a negotia- negotiation. No, I'm talking to Don. I think the thought was is that they probably keep PD or keep animal control in control. Because part of it is, is even if, even if, even if they were codeless to do that, it's like seventy-five percent of the time, they're not on. So you've, you've got, you've got police officers all the time typically. So, and that, it would probably stay at that just to be an easier facilitation on that, so.
Yeah, if they're wanting to enforce that, that's what they want, then yeah, two.
One, if we're trying to get people to really start following, it may be a trick.
Yeah.
So keep it up there?
The other thing that I wanted to talk about primarily is have some sales tax. So that was approved last year. We do not start collecting on that or it goes into effect in October of next year. We get our first collection from that in December of next year. Kind of conservatively, figuring eight hundred thousand dollars a year, that's about twelve million dollars worth of sales tax to the region that we'll have. We may be closer to a million dollars and that gets us about fourteen, a little over fourteen million.
Is that based on our sales tax now? Cause you know, don't you get the figures you're buying now?
That's why I, the eight hundred thousand is kind of what I've been looking at, budgeting wise, just to be conservative on what we would have available. That way if you have a dip or something, you're, you're kind of covered. But the nine hundred and fifty is probably relatively safe where we've been this year and even kind of in some of the previous years, I think we'd probably be all right. The, so kind of to date, what we've done is, I know we, we have talked, we released the RFP to the company and we kind of talked about, we'd like to do this. We've got it set up to be a portion of that, the scope for that to kind of talk about kind of parks and more specifically than just generally, it might get most comprehensive plans, talk about parks a little bit, but give it a little bit more focus. We've also, and I say we, cause I think Randy's been on most of those and I think Tiffany's been on some of those, but we've talked to the financial advisors about, you know, when we do bond things and depending on how aggressive we want to, we can kind of, we can get out ahead of that sales tax collection if we want to a little bit, if we like, we need to. But that's, some of that's taking in whether or not we want to do some short term notes to get us to where we can get a project done and then do a final bond. If we know we've got a good project going, we're gonna do the bond. I mean, there, because there's a lot of options there if we wanna go ahead, that, that collection. We've also met with pale youth sports, about ball fields down Walms Park. That, that, that proposal right now, I've seen numbers between two point five and three million.
How many do they have on that board?
I don't, I don't know.
With the two point five, that number, does that also include the entire, like the changing of the, the street down there? Basically the entire, is that just the bomb?
My, the two point five plan was kind of keeping these fields in the same place and turfing. But it wasn't, there was some, some lighting that wasn't gonna be upgraded, I think. Some of it was and some of it wasn't.
I think there were smaller, I talked to Scott, there were smaller fields.
Yeah, there were a little smaller fields. The, there is, they gave us options on the clover leaf closing down that, that street. One was the smaller field, that was right at three million and then the ones for a little bit bigger field was like two twenty, two fifty, I think, or two forty. They were three point four, three point six. There has been a push from that group to do something for the spring. I don't, I, I feel like that's, I don't, I, I feel like it's fast and I don't even know, even though they said it's, they could get it done, I don't think they could get it done.
They're front of money.
What?
They're front of money. I mean, we don't have money yet.
Well, and, and, and that, the group, they used a group out of Manhattan Sports to kind of give some conceptual design stuff. And they haven't said, well, we, we do that for a year. Well, we, we'd probably be in a position where we'd have to let them do it for a year. Then we'd have to go out and get bonds ahead of the money that we collect. So we'd almost be, we're almost two years ahead. And I, I think, I guess from my perspective, that's, that's fast. I know they like to have new fields, which is moving. I just don't think we can get there. And I, I, even if, even if we gave them the go, I don't know. I find it. Amazing things can happen, but I, I find it hard to, like to get ball fields constructed over the winter and be ready to go by April.
Well, I wanna be careful too, because that's a big chunk of money.
Yes, it is.
And I think the money that we need for the pool and the parks and the streets and I'm, I, all along, I've said, I, I think we need to do something. But I wanna make, I wanna be careful and I wanna make sure they understand that it's not whatever you want.
Yeah, I hope not. Sure, home is the more people.
Is there any grants that they, like, did they not give anything, you know?
As far as.
For the ball field there, have they looked at anything?
I know that they, they talked, they looked at some grants for like maybe the playgrounds, they wanted to do the playground near the ball fields. That's, that's all that I know of right now. And I don't know, there may be some opportunities for funding out there. But I think we'd have, we would need some time. We'd have to kind of get more scoped out where we want to, we have to try to dig in, try to find those.
Shouldn't we figure out what we want to do with the pool too?
Well, and, and.
Well, we could have money to front.
So I'm getting there. I said I'm getting there. So we've, so we've met with Carothers about kind of like what I, what I'm dealing pool rehab, which is basically what we need to maybe do to the pool to ensure that we got it out of there twenty years out of it.
That's not changing the footprint?
That's not changing anything. That's, that's basically trying to think of those things that we need to address. And we, and even talking to them, some of that stuff is maybe, maybe things that we do more as a pay as you go. Like we may have a chunk that we do upfront, but then we may be like the filters. I know they looked at that a few years ago and they, they were all right. Okay, well, we know that we're gonna have to do it at some point. Maybe you don't have to do it upfront, but we know that year five or eight, we're gonna have to spend money to do that. And we just do that as pay as we go. But that kind of, those costs were estimated around one point five. Then there's been talk about enhancements. We had a meeting today with Splash Packer. And they had some numbers from twenty sixteen. They're getting updated those, but those numbers with the enhancements, we're looking at about one point five.
In addition to?
In addition to. And those you can, I mean, it may be something that, oh, we don't want this item. We, you know, you can kind of pick and choose a little bit, but just, I think, I'm not sure if this council got that. But it was like, there was like four additional features that they were looking at, like a splash pad. Kind of like three side, additional side features. And then the typical OEM needs, which is I estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is kind of where we've been over that fifteen year period, you're looking at another two point two million. And so just within the pool, you're at, you're at over five million of, of kind of need. And that doesn't include, if you add these additional features.
Additional.
You may need a lot more light bars or you may have, I, I, I think that's probably the bigger cost than maybe even, oh, you've gotta run them home. You've gotta have more bars and then whether or not you can actually get the bars up, another question there. But you're, you may increase your OEM that you have. And that's another thing with, with the ball field, but I think we, as we get into that, we wanna make sure that we're looking at, you know, what's our operation and maintenance costs that we're gonna have ongoing? Because most, most of this, if we do something like that turf, I realize those might be low maintenance, but there's still maintenance.
Replacement costs of that, like, I don't know, on my last, they replaced, you know, trash and fields every.
Yep, that, and that includes, that, so that's a ten to twelve years is what they told us. You have to refurbish that field. And that's a, it's about, I think he said about fifty percent of the cost. Now, I don't remember if he, if that was fifty percent of the original and total cost for fifty percent of just the field cost, but you'd be looking at a million dollars or more just to do that. So that three million dollar project is now a four million dollar project.
Why do they?
Could they give us, yeah, could they give us the cost of natural grass or maybe one field turf and grass?
Yeah, I think we can, we can do that on a way or not. I think part of the route was is, right, I think part of the thought was is the turf is, it, there is, because there's costs to having good grass, you know, and so, and with it being down where it could get flooded. And I think we'd have to ask some good questions about how does the turf respond being flooded too? I mean, it, it's not gonna, because oftentimes when you have flood, you get silt and all that and what is that? Maybe there's a, you just kind of run over it and it kind of cleans it and that's good or we got a big, big old mess. So all those things.
I think one of the main things on the turf is because they're wanting to do tournaments. Cause up there at the school, on the hall here, there's somebody up there at the weekend that's usually sending a pretty good amount of money to be there. So I think that's why they were pointing one.
Yeah. Well.
If they charge for those tournaments, now the school district gets that money, right? Okay, so down there, if they charge for that, does that go back into the money here to help operate?
And I, I think, I think that's, that's something we would have to figure out. I, I guess my thought is, is getting the money that we, we could generate some revenue with that by hosting tournaments. But we're gonna have, we're gonna need to have staff there to oversee that. And you still may have an opportunity for local organizations, because I think at the high school, the way they do it, is if the tournament is being hosted, like maybe the softball team will, will help, not necessarily run the tournament, they'll run the concession stand and do the kind of stuff they need to do. Well, maybe that's something that a local group can do, they can earn a little bit of money from the tournament. But we get the tournament fee or the tournament rental money from that. The increase, yeah. But, so, I mean, just that, those two things are basically, you're talking about fifty eight to sixty nine percent of that total money. And then, like I said, that doesn't include potentially the additional O M costs, it doesn't include what we want to do to the streets, it doesn't include enhancement of other parks. We also, I think, we've got the, some of that dam stabilization stuff that we need to do like my own, which I think would fit into this expense, doesn't account for any of that, it doesn't, you know, anything with the trails and. So I guess that's where I kind of wanted to come to council and if, if we're good, I can continue the conversations with those groups to say that we're not gonna have the ball, ball fields by spring, twenty twenty one.
I see, and it's possible, we need to, in my opinion, I think we need a really good plan as far as what, what the, what the actual cost is and all of the different options, so we can look at that and we can determine what we're willing to spend out of that. Especially knowing how, how big of a piece of the pie we've got to give to the pool just for maintenance and regular operation, not even including the one and a half million if possible and enhancements.
Right.
And the other parks and streets, because we've got some issues there too, and the dam, that's, that's a concern too, to be able to take care of, so.
Yeah, and we need all of that in there, and then look at the total cost and decide what options we feel that we can justify using that land. Now then.
With, with that, are you comfortable with kind of going with the plan of, of kind of working through the comprehensive plan process? I mean, we could, we could, I think when we develop that final scope for them, we could tell them, hey, we want this parks conversation kind of front loaded on the prop, like where they can give us, I don't know, a lot of times in engineering studies, they call it technical, random, but something like that, that where they, it's not really the final study, but it's like, here's what we think you should know about parks right now, from what we've gathered. And we could do that, we could also try to figure out, we feel like we need to, we could try to get our own kind of work group, community study group on, on that, try to get people that may have interest in ball fields and those that may have interest in parks in general, and those that have interest in the pool, and get them together and kind of work through some of that. I don't know what the council's preferences.
I know, I don't want to have to post a poll because we bring out a money, I know that, and we are almost at that point, before. So that has to be top priority.
By not opening last year, we should have some money left in that budget.
Right, we have one year left, I think, of operation.
We do, we, we did, if we didn't have it, we probably would have been buying last year.
Which, oh, that was a lot of the focus for the sales tax sign, and I think that's probably why a lot of people voted for it.
I think that, yeah, I think a lot of people anticipate there being, at a minimum, a pool rehab done. I don't know about the enhancements, now I see all the, how much everything else costs, but, and I think that's why, I think a lot will pass the so tax, I mean, they, you know, the pool would need.
Well, I, the ball fields, like I said, I'd like to look at everything, but I, we don't even, we don't even know if they can have tournaments this spring. You know, so even if they did get it done, even if they did, we don't even know what we're gonna be in three months.
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't even, we're only, you know.
I think there are grants and stuff out there too.
I do too.
That, yeah.
Yeah, help off certain laws. Like, I agree that we need to do something, because when you, when you go to some of the council rounds and you see what they've got, it's kind of embarrassing that, I've been to tournaments here before, you go to the bachelor, and you're like.
We do believe that.
Right, it's pretty sketchy, and, you know, and so I, I understand that, but at the same time, I'm not willing, I'm not willing just to say, oh yeah, we'll do that, because that's, that's a big chunk. I want to see a better plan, especially for what we know we've already got to, we've already got to take care of.
You know, I mean, that's a big complex.
Yeah.
I mean, I know they have a record, they should not know where they get their funding, you know, so. I don't, I don't, but they still don't have a huge tax base, is that, is what I mean? Have a nice complex.
And they just give it to the school and then?
Oh, the commission, is it? And it has to be.
They actually, they do the Y of the.
Yeah, it has to be, they're interested in the city. So.
That's the difference, you guys need to have a, like, conversation, need to have school district, if this is built, then I just see the, the, makes sense, like. The burden that these schools will have to deal with, and the burden the state wants to deal with, that the rec commission can deal with, the maintenance and these.
Well, I think after I have all these facilities, and it's been a while since the other bond was passed for the school, then people are more absolutely need for, as long as there's programs not just for the kids, it has to be all financing.
But I do, I want to see the overall thing before you're making the decision on just saying, oh yeah, you can have this or you can have that.
Yeah.
Have a game plan.
Well, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where I've been stepping towards, but I, and I, and I have been, I guess I've been, I haven't been way focused on that, because I've been kind of knowing that our, our, I didn't want to get way ahead of where our collections are by bonding something out, two years ahead of time when we could really make the first payment. I realize, from a financial standpoint, from a financial advisor, you know, oh, you can do about anything, but it's a little bit like, I'd rather be a little closer to that kind of line.
I'd rather know what the comments.
Right, where we are on the, our bonds are now, are we gonna have any?
Anything dropping out?
Yeah. Well, refinancing and stuff, I know during the last couple of years.
Right, I think everything, by the end of next year, we still have those, those ones that we're refining ants that are out there. That was tied to the sewer improvements.
We can refine P U A, that's what we're here to do.
That would have entered the P U A, that wouldn't be?
Yeah. But then, like all building stuff, that, I think everything is, I think this was the last year, it was the last year for the fire.
I didn't, the air truck, so.
Well, there, no, the, the fire building.
Oh, yeah.
I think there's still some on the, on the truck, there's still maintenance. But that's, that was just a one.
Oh, yeah.
And then I think between the library and city hall and the community center and the justice center, all that ends next year with the, the final of that.
But is there only enough space at justice center, the money in that sales tax?
I don't, I think so.
It's not even five years, so I just damn if they're building up the bonds, the funds to cover those five years.
Okay. So it should be all right, because I.
When do you expect, you said that they'll do kind of the part piece first, maybe if we ask, when do you anticipate? A window, do you have a window?
Because we have, I mean, we're not bid for the, the, the comfort plan, those are due the sixteenth of this month. And then that year would be as, depending on how many we get back, if we get twenty back, we may take, we may, and that may be something, we can just do a special meeting in, in January. Just so that, because probably what we will do is review them, we may have to shortlist them, and then if we get three or four, we kind of conduct an interview with them and then make a recommendation, bring that recommendation to council. But that is, we could maybe try to do that at the January meeting. And we also have to, at Christmas and New Years. Which I think we thought about, but now that I'm thinking about like, oh, that.
Because I do like the idea of loading that upfront, so we can get that portion out of it.
And I, I think we could easily do that, that, you know, we talked, you know, we talked with so much, I don't know why you, you have to be think that. But I think that they could know that that kind of, that would needs to be, some of that would need to be done upfront.
That's a pretty good, yeah, I mean, there's even more stuff, I'm sure, related stuff, those things that, but kind of the standard, what we normally spend out there on the streets every year, we kind of have a good idea what our typical, everything that parks is looking more unpredictable, so.
Well, and that's going to always determine too, what, what we want to bond upfront, how much, and kind of plan that out, because I like the idea of taking smaller chunks and getting stuff done as opposed to kind of bonding a lot out of. I think it makes sense to do some bonds with, like, with the pool, because originally I was saying, well, we just did all the, you know, we've got, you may have five, ten years on those filters, and why say you're gonna replace them now and then either not do it or, and, and do it and not really maybe need it for, and most of that stuff, you could, I think you could probably get to the point where you're like, okay, next year, we gotta get that before next year, we, it's not so catastrophic.
Once possible.
Possibly, that's just an urgent thing.
You know, you might, you might short it a year versus shorting it five or ten years.
Right.
You're a little proactive on your replacement, maybe you're gonna do it at the beginning of the year, yeah.
That's replacement before they break down and shut down.
Yeah, yeah.
You shut down, you shouldn't do well. You know, when you do the upgrades, you'll bring in new people, but you have to be aware of the cost that you're going to charge the people who use that facility.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get a, you crush yourself by all this.
Just like, I think, just raise rates, Austria, or if not Austria, another, maybe Austria.
What, was that, were you going, were they gonna be raised?
Everybody, they're gonna be raised this year, I think. Okay, yeah.
You didn't see any change there?
No, no, they've come.
We're staying pretty bad, yeah.
We didn't make anything. I think some of the thing with the pool is it's just an education thing for people, because they have no idea how much cost they're on. So they didn't realize. It's not, it was.
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of people that thought that too.
It's a quality of life, they should, no, you did not make too many.
Right.
Well, I need to think about enhancements, and, you know, depending on the enhancements we do, we may have to add staff.
Well, I hadn't really thought about that until we were having that conversation today, and I was like, well, heck, if we had a slide, you gotta have one person up top and one person down below minimum. And if you had three, you got.
Maybe you scale that back, because you don't have, or you do that, and kind of figure, choose what you can do and then down the line, and you can maybe make up better.
I didn't even plan on facing, you know, planning on facing some of the events, we don't have to do it all at once, because we've all got maintenance to do. You know, we've got the operational costs to do, so maybe we decide, okay, in the first, first year, first two years, we're gonna do this, and then three years down the road, we're gonna add this. That helps, that helps also in some of the operational costs too, if you add features of required additional.
You added your enhancement, did you go along?
And we talked about, one thing that I think is interesting, we talked about is, one of the proposed features was a splash pad, kind of in thinking about, is there a way that we could gate it and utilize it so that it could open actually early and close later, because we don't actually have to have somebody on staff to do that. And we also, I also talked to them about, kind of quoting what, kind of state and local splash pad would be, and that could be something that's apartment camp, but those are the different section of town, so you've got kind of a different feature.
Do you guys have filter that water, that with this splash pad? Yeah, some maintenance.
Well, I, I, I say that, you could do, there's two options, you can just, you can recycle what you would need to do all that, or you can just let it run and, and you're always using new water. I will say that if you, if we do a standalone, we need to think about that. Because we lived in Newton, there was, they could want in, in the neighborhood. Tweet your neighborhoods, and, and I, a couple of years ago, I saw a board, get to a point where they're gonna buy a bath or do something with bathrooms, because there's so many complaints of it.
Water.
Water at lawns? So if we do one, we have to do the other, or we didn't think it.
Very good, but if I wanted to, like, you know, put my bathroom right there.
Yeah.
Maybe you should buy a pool at Four Point. We just type the P S I up on that, on that county.
They're good.
It isn't my county.
Yeah.
One big goal for another doesn't do good. Somewhere you have to figure out where to draw a line, much better.
That, that's all I had, is need, I think, that's a concern about us.
I've got stuff that's like, not only to the, I've got citizen concerns. First of all, I know this one's gonna be interesting, Burrows, of course, and the goat problem.
And the what?
Goat problems, you know, the goats that are across the street that are on city, county land, and then.
Oh, across the road, Ford Rose Jones, because they're in the lake.
Nice houses up there.
A lot more concerned about the water.
Yeah, and so there's, it's a multi-layered thing, that I've had people from Burrows contact me and they, they're just like, what's their, what's the plan? We understand that.
Are they around here, Burrows, so I don't?
When the wind is right, I guess, didn't hear it, you know, it's more of a thing that, so like, the wind blows, that they're actually gonna like it, but also they are concerned about the water seeping into the lake. And as the lake being our, our emergency water source, flavor, it is nature flavor. So they're, I just like, that's something that, I know that, that's a county, I don't know what, like, that's a multi.
Well, and I think, one thing I'm, I'm thinking of, I think, it taught me that, we've talked to K D H G about the goats and that concern with the water, I think my initial name was, it wasn't something we need to be worried about, which I realize that's easy to say, or, you know, the person broke. And the other thing is, is I would encourage them that during the county's comprehensive planning process, they should request that the county works, that, what's that, what's it called? I can't remember what it was called, it used to be in place, no longer in place.
Growth area.
Growth area, yeah, growth area. Probably just a couple of percent of it. But that, we can then have a little bit of say what's going on in our growth area. That would be, that would give us a little bit more ability to address that concern.
Yeah, the county did away with those growth areas, I think.
I did tell them to contact the kind of commissioner, that it's something that, I don't think that person's doing anything they shouldn't be doing. You know, they're, there's that culture, that culture over there, and they're, they're good. Yeah, there's, they, they, there's more than I.
Damn, really adding two guns. But is that like, you're having to temperate? It's not a city, but our water supply is right there.
And it all comes closed right down, and then goes right into.
And K D H G doesn't care.
They said, whatever we talked about last time, because I got a phone call from, uh, Moore, because he's out there on the road or whatever, that K D H G was in a test, actually not in a test, I understood.
So, so is it just more annoying than it is a health issue?
That they're concerned with the number of goats, as well as the impact of initiative property values because of their tend to be to the goats.
What are they doing to the goats?
They sell the milk.
They milk them?
They, yeah, they sell the milk.
Well, I milked somebody, got milked, milked them by hand.
They have people who come by, there's a guy who has forty goats, and he, they sell all the milk. People come by and get it. Why?
Uh, we had that stat, um, I know that's not really gonna go away, so we left it on your plate, I guess. Other thing is, I've been contacted by Indian Hills H O A, uh, which is the neighborhood I live in. Um, I'm kind of shot away from, out on the drum, with Indian Hills, because I kind of live in a neighborhood, um, now. They came in, they got some legitimate concerns, that they want, they, they're concerned with the traffic that kind of goes through there, they, they would like to get a number count, you know, how many vehicles kind of go through there. Um, I mean, roll or run the stop signs, they wanting, they, they're asking about lower speed limits. They, there is a child, a, a slow child play sign on the sign that is just past first option bank, but it, they, they want to know if we can just take that sign off and move it to a stop sign that's at. At the entrance of basically Indian Hills right there, and I believe that they, they were wanting to know if they could get on the other side of the other stop sign that's coming up with, where's that Sundance? Um, they wanted, they inquire about the street lamps along the sidewalk on Sundance, that goes sort of like the apartment complexes and stuff. Right now, the only lighting is actually from the storage units, and there's a lot of foot traffic, and they just think that it's, it needs to be, they need some exterior lighting along that sidewalk.
There, that is dark, and, and I, I agree, I gave a girl my flashlight one night, and I said it's too dark, and you'd be out here.
So, I, the one benefit of the storage units that are over there, they do provide lighting, and, like, if it wasn't there, it'd be complete darkness over there.
I agree, Aaron. Does the city do that?
Do what?
Put in street lights, like along the air?
I would think that would be Everdeen, that would be, have to work with.
I know, we'd have to work with Everdeen, not, that's what I mean, though, could they not do that? How do you feel about requesting?
They just would have to talk with Everdeens and see what.
And request them.
That, yeah, um.
I know we'd have to pay for the street lights, don't we, because there's numbers on, I know there's something wrong, small marching, give her the number on.
Yeah. Well, and, I mean, some people like dark skies too.
Yeah, but that's really not safe there. I, I agree with what Aaron's saying, that little stretch of road there, just a couple of street lights would make a big difference. That really is dark.
Well, there's not, hasn't been any there, no houses, but there are been lots of traffic.
People walk, you know, that's got to be a real, pocketable walk trail through there. And people walk from Sundance, they'll walk over to the bank, getting in on the long line.
And if that road ever gets built and connects Hidden Meadows into, to there, there will be more foot traffic that kind of goes through the middle school, the kind of process goes through the middle school.
Those are our kids that walk.
But that's, that's part of my thing, is that, um, before the time change, I was seeing kids walking to school in darks. Um, and there's I T guy from the county, that he's like, he's a younger guy, super smart, and he has tablets, doesn't always use the, um, sidewalk. Um, so, it's one of the things where it's, and he, and you'll be, I could, I could be going home right now, and I could be out there walking, um, oblivious, yeah. Um, and it's just this thing that, yeah, I'm usually, usually looking for things, but a lot of people don't know that there aren't. Uh, they sort of know if there's ways that we can deter traffic from going through there. People literally use the shortcut, so they don't have to go to the stop light. And if there's any way that we could do like a, you know, no through traffic sign, or something like that, and.
I think you can do that, I.
I think you would, I think you would end up having a hard time enforcing.
I've got some residents, they're gonna really dig some pop.
You know, we had tried to address this several years ago, after the traffic, and they park on both sides of the street, I mean, that's just really, that street is very difficult. Let's make it.
Got three cars. We got rid of some of the parking, and they are very grateful for that, that they, we, it's basically about the, the safety of the residents and the kids. That people are flying through there, and either, either that or we need to strictly enforce the speed limit through there, so that people don't take it as a shortcut anymore, I guess. We had some business owners that once lived in the neighborhood, and it made a difference, they don't live there anymore, so now it's, um, we've got citizens that are throwing basketball at the crack of my life, like that.
Well, we could try to put another child lane sign, and that should not be hard to do, should it?
It's easy to put signs in, but it doesn't, it doesn't do, I mean, it doesn't, there's no enforcement to it. We can't say that you weren't going slow enough because of that sign.
It just calls attention, it's what it does.
But the, the people that are doing what they're doing, they're not paying attention.
We're about speed bumps.
I hate speed bumps.
Well, I, I agree, because I never, you know, at first I was like, oh, it's gonna be very bad through with all the, with all the cars.
Oh, I know that, that way, it's still.
But I was asking.
Yeah, I take care of this girl, so that's it.
Because I'm prepared to view that, I don't know this sign, this sign is gonna make a difference. But I don't know.
I know the school bus goes down there and throws off children, and it's crazy, but.
But, but that's, uh, yeah, it's kind of like, ah, and it'll be a thing, I'm sure that Indian Hills will continue to reach out to you guys and see if there's solutions.
Speed bumps on the street. Well, other, other.
On a public street.
I think it has.
Just enforcing it.
Spike strips.
Yeah.
Spike strips.
Or maybe the deploy, over twenty-five miles an hour.
That's the annoying problem, all the cars, the traffic, and the kids. That narrow street, I can't believe they would use that, that through on.
Well, actually, because it used to have the parking on both sides, and after we changed it, now, imagine it after being the other way.
Looks like when it was.
Yeah. It is parked anyway.
It is, yeah, I just.
What about making it one lane?
I think some people would be for that.
I mean, some people. Causes a little bit of inconvenience, but it would, it would make the enticement cutting through any of us.
You know, that, that might work.
Plus the.
And parking is all on the one side, so if you made one way, it'd be going that direction. The idea is, is that now, if you're coming home, that's, here's the other thing, is to connect it with Hidden Meadows. And it made it, that way, if people wanted to get home without having to go all the way around, they could go through Hidden Meadows, and it would be right there, but that's not an option I'd do about. If it was, there was, was it, like, a one way in that direction, I could see it working. But I think it would, some people would not like it at all, because you're going to.
Well, at least you're taking some positive advantage.
Yeah. Like, I personally would be against it, but that's something I can take back to H O A and ask them what their thoughts on, um, ask.
I didn't see that working.
Yeah, maybe something would.
Yeah, uh, definitely.
Okay, we're talking about different.
Traffic now would go, would lower for sure.
Most of them are lower.
The thing is, it could be, if you, which you did one way, at what point in time would we be two way again? Like, right when we get outside the stop sign? Because it's like, if you, if you exit, say, the, the bank, first option bank, is it a left internal lane, like that thing, you have to stop by, you can't go into the.
But you need to get into any truck.
Right, you have to make that a minute more.
Yeah, make the corner off.
And I guess, I can ask and then.
That all on your list?
Yep.
There's some tracking. So the guns, and, and.
I'm standing on, I'm standing on the street.